Okay, let's call them. Yeah, no, they're thirty.
Let's leave you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Basting? Chambers?
Here.
Dahl?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Lindsay?
Here.
Stuffus?
Here.
Solomon?
Okay, I'm for discussion is follow up to the odor that shut this school down on the nineteenth.
So I can give you a kinda, kind of a timeline. I was in the building to start the day on last Wednesday. Took a tour of the building and Vicki had stopped me, she says, "Do you notice a faint odor?" And it was like a dried trap, kinda what you could smell, just real faint, but we had contacted, Elf was on duty at the time, contacted Elf, he put water down there. I left about eight fifteen, there was a meeting in CISA, a PAC meeting for all the superintendents in the area, so I left at eight fifteen. Got down to CISA about nine, the meeting was just about ready to start, and then I get a phone call, "Hey, there's a pretty strong odor in the building, and what do you want us to do?" And I said, "Well, alright, I'm coming back." So I just jumped in my car and came back. The odor for the most part was downstairs in that middle school. So Miss Dahl brought all the middle school students to this level in the building, called back and forth a couple times, "Has anybody called a line?" Because the last time we had this problem in the summer, I'll say spring of 2017, it was May, June, somewhere in there, you know, we had a line here, we had the fire department here, kinda checking the building out. By the time I got back here, a line was, there were three different alliance workers going through the building, there were two fire department people here using monitors, trying to figure out what it was. Everything seemed to be downstairs, a line went through the building multiple times with gas sensors, same thing with the fire department. The odor was again, still strong down in the basement level. We'd probably had four or five middle school students go home, headaches, the odor was causing some issues. I had tried to get ahold of Jeff, was unable, so I talked to Nate, and just kinda shared with Nate what was going on, basically saying, "At this point in time, you know, it will probably snowball and have more students, well, if you get to go home because of a headache, then I'm gonna say I've got a headache." And we still couldn't track down the source. Brian Marr came up then, as his students had been dismissed, and he and I went through the building a couple of different times, and his decision was, you know, "Let's, let's just close up the building, I'll come back up, at the end of the day, we'll walk through. Is the smell still here, is it gone? You know, we'll know, is this a leak somewhere, is this some other issue going on?" So I called Roger, he was, he was off for a medical appointment, just took the whole day off due to the timing of his appointment. I called and I said, "Hey, are you at home? I'm meeting Brian Marr up at the school, if you wanna take a tour with us." So the two of, or the three of us walked through, about three o'clock, walked through the building a couple of different times, you know, where, where do we think issues could be happening back downstairs? And that's when Brian and Roger talked, and said, "Well, has anybody, anything been poured in any of these floor drains?" Because in the boiler room downstairs, there are at least four different floor drains down there. And, you know, Brian, in the conversation, you know, you got the water heaters, and you got the furnace, all of them are pulling air through, it's, you know, there's a good chance they dry out. And then Roger said, "Well, we have a product," and the name on the product, the main name on the product is Northwoods, comes in a plastic bottle. Well, I found out that Northwoods makes three products, they all look quite similar. One of them is a drain cleaner, one of them is a, in essence, a drain sealer, because sometimes they'll talk about, "Well, if you just pour vegetable oil down your sink drain, that kinda helps keep the trap from drying out." One of these products from Northwoods does that. Somebody in the plumbing department told Roger that that's probably not the best for PVC drain pipes, but this other product works, and then there, there is a Northwoods urinal cleaner that they would pour down the urinals to make sure that it keeps flowing. And at that time, Brian said, "I bet a drain cleaner was used instead of the drain sealer to try to seal that smell in." He says, "He goes, "I did that at the firehouse one time, it, it's pretty easy." And Roger's like, "Well, the bottles all look quite similar, you know, and if, if somebody's on you, like, 'Hey, the stink is still here, you really need to do something about it.' If you go in and grab a bottle that says Northwoods," which is what I'm assuming has happened, and then, and then when I followed up with Roger a couple of days later, he said, "Yeah, now I know that it was the drain cleaner that got used, so that's why the smell was more localized to the lower level, but once it gets into the air handlers, it will start to make its way around the building." So I asked him on a follow-up to that, and I'm like, "Well, can we make sure that this doesn't happen again?" And he says, "Well, I had the two bottles in two different locations back in his area." He says, "But now I've got them in completely two different locations in the building. So now the sealer is in one location in the building, and the drain cleaner is in a completely different, so that if this, if they know they need to use the sealer, they know they can't go back there, it's not located back there to try to keep this from happening again." When we walked through at three o'clock, you couldn't really tell anything was in the building at that point in time. And Brian felt pretty comfortable that, that must have been the issue, and that we would be clear for school the next day. So I contacted the administrators, building administrators and Joel to let them know we were okay, then Joel and I worked on a response, she goes, "You know, if you wanna take a look at this tonight, great, otherwise we can send it out first thing in the morning." And so she and I communicated back and forth a few different times, and then I, she's like, "Well, do you want me to let it out?" And I said, "Send it out tonight, you know, that way everybody knows plan on the bus is running on time, and everything is good for the next day of school." So we believe, you know, other than having a security camera that, in the boiler room that shows that, we believe that's really what had taken place that night, or that afternoon.
There have been other occurrences with, with a sewer smell. Are we any farther in trying to figure out what's going on there, Mitch? Seems to be an ongoing problem, especially in the lower level of the building.
We, you know, this time of year tends to be more the sewer traps, we do get that smell upstairs. Now, I've not been notified of that smell upstairs in about a year now. And we believe one of the reasons, there's two vent pipes on this southeast wing of the high school classrooms there, so if you go on in front of the main office, or the district office entrance and look back up, you'll see two white pipes. Now they have like a black cap on them. And we were told, you know, it's like, okay, you know, my first question is, "Okay, this building's been here for twenty-plus years, how can this be happening just now?"
What was asked the question?
You know, and we've had people come out and take a look, you know, EMC, our safety people have come out and taken a look, we've had other engineers come out and take a look. Finally, one of the local guys said, one of the local plumbers said, "Have you tried a charcoal filter?" So those caps that you see, you'll see up there are charcoal filters on the end of those vent pipes. And since we've put that up there, I've not been aware of any sewer gas smell, you know, because people come out and say, "Well, do you smell it all the time?" No, we don't smell it all the time. Well, if, if there was a cracked pipe somewhere, you know, running up through the wall, you would smell it regularly, you know, it wouldn't be just smell it, you know, once and then four weeks from now you might get a faint odor. And we've contacted the city, are, are they doing anything with the sewer lines or the pump station, you know, what, you know, we've been searching and searching and searching to try to find an answer. Brian Marr had said at Cummins, they got, I wanna say, it's either Stephanie or Sharon Bessa is her name, she has a company in Madison, and they, that's what her company does, is like air quality. It says, "We had a, an issue at Cummins, and we had her come down with all her testing equipment for four days." I don't know if they had a, you know, a gas leak or something that they were concerned about, and he said, "She didn't find anything, but he gave me some information to try to get ahold of her, so I would like to just reach out and, you know, not that cost is super important over finding an answer, but, you know, I'd like to see what it would cost to have her come out and just kinda test the building here, because it is local, you know, centralized to, to our building. They've not had this issue at the elementary school."
Is the theory, Mitch, that the, the two vents that are going out are at times, before the charcoal filters, the, the exhaust is so intense that it's drifting back into the school?
That with kinda like wind direction.
Yeah, the wind is just kinda blowing it into the...
Yeah, the wind is blowing right, you know, because typically it's early in the school day that you get that smell, you know, and the thought is, "Okay, if kids are coming in and out of this door, that sometimes the wind, you know, it just kinda follows the building..."
Pulling air in from outside.
Yep, you know, the air handlers will pull air in, because they kick in in the morning, and Roger has turned the air handlers on sooner in the morning to try to get air flowing through the building a little bit earlier before anybody's in the building, you know, we're, we're trying everything we can to try to prevent this issue. Sometimes it seems like it's on this side of the building, sometimes it seems like it's on this side of the building, and with that, with the vent pipes up there, you know, it's like, well, is the simple answer, raise them higher, and well, then you kinda start to lose some of the, the ability for the gases to escape, you know, so again, we're just, we don't have a real solid answer as to where to turn next.
When did you put the caps on, the filters?
Um, last spring.
Okay. So one, one could imagine that if you were to get a air quality person to come down, they'd almost have to be notified the next time you get a smell to have them here in the building that day.
That would be ideal, you know, maybe that's what...
Maybe that's what Roger needs to set up, is, is, "So the next time that there is a smell, can, can you come in, in an hour or two if they're from Madison, you know?"
And I can, you know, when I finally am able to make contact with this person, I can try to set something like that up and say, "Would you, would you be willing to just come out and kinda do a walkthrough of our building and get a sense of what we are, and then, like, you know, almost be on call, so if we have that issue, you know, unless, and I don't know what, how busy she is in her business, or how many other associates she has in her business, that if they're somewhere else in the state doing a test, but, you know, if they have four, five, six people, could one of them come out and, and just kinda test what's going on?
There, there were no medical issues the other day with the school board?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
Good. And you said the carbon monoxide levels were normal or...
Correct, yeah, yeah, they brought all their, you know, the test equipment that they had, they were looking for methane, they were looking for carbon monoxide, all those things were, were fine, as they kept saying, "Well, I've got all zeros, I've got all zeros, so everything is well within the limits, so..."
Okay.
And I, you know, again, I, you know, it's like going to the doctor, sorry, guys, but, you know, I don't know what's wrong with you, you know, I'd rather know what's wrong with me than, than not know, you know, I'd rather know what's causing this problem than not, you know, and at least be able to have an answer to, "Yep, we gotta take care of this, or we know this is broken," or whatever, I'd, I'd love to have that answer.
Well, certainly, we go with the air quality, it'd be no different than, than a hospital, and, and maybe we should have a air quality study completed in, in this building, so we know what the baseline is to start with, and I think, I think that's expected of us, really. I think let's reach out to that lady and see if she'll come out and so forth, then we can move on.
Okay.
Unless somebody else has it else. Okay. Okay, move on. Fast fraction, inclusion, or if you got it, attaching parcels.
Okay. The, the section of land that is highlighted in blue right now is, is the Baker property. And you have a, a sheet in your board packet that talks about the assessed value of that property. And we had it verified by the town clerk, his letter, verification letter is in here. So the value of that property as it sits is $231,000. As we said at the last board meeting, you know, Iowa Grant's not gonna just let all of this land go. So they asked if there would be anything possible, in essence, a swap. There is a gentleman who owns this piece of property, David McMillan, and he also owns, I won't show, but it's kinda behind there. So basically, Mr. McMillan, his property borders the Iowa Grant district. So what's gray is Iowa Grant School District property, the tax, property taxes paid there, go to the Iowa Grant. Everything in the kinda yellowish color, tan color, is Mineral Point School District property. So the Baker property is surrounded, completely surrounded, you know, I just reached out and said, you know, "It's an island, can, you know, would you be willing..." They weren't interested, but Tim and Mandy Baker are. So I spoke with Mr. McMillan, the Bakers spoke to Mr. McMillan, very nice gentleman. "I don't have children, I've never had children, I support public education, whatever I can do to help, I met the Bakers, if this helps the Bakers, I'm more than happy to allow this to happen." So he is in agreement to allow his, these two properties, these two parcels, to be transferred into the Iowa Grant School District. His value of those two pieces of property, the assessed value is $205,000. So it's a little bit less than what we would be getting in return, accepting the Baker property. So Iowa Grant would be willing to allow the Baker property to be attached to our school district, if you're willing to allow the McMillan parcels to be attached to the Iowa Grant School District.
They've already agreed.
Iowa, Iowa Grant had a special meeting Tuesday night, approve this contingent on us approving, in essence, the same pieces.
So they've already voted to approve the swap?
Yes.
Contingent on us approving the swap?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I tried to assure that I'm not, I'm not dealing from the bottom of the deck, I'm not trying to get two pieces of property for, for nothing here.
Sure, sure.
But I just said, "If you wanna pass, you know, pass it that way." I said, "Our, our board is meeting Thursday night, I, I would certainly recommend the approval of this." The Bakers have three children, one is attending school right now through open enrollment, so if the property becomes ours, all of the state funding becomes ours, the taxes for their property become ours, and they're, and Tim and Amanda are, we want your, our property in your district, we don't wanna continue open enrollment, we want everything that we're doing to come to the Mineral Point School District.
I move that we approve the resolution to attach the Baker property and, no, yes, attach the Baker property and detach the McMillan property.
Should we do them together or separate?
I think you could do them together.
Okay.
I'll second.
Is there any downside to this, Mitch?
In, in my mind, no. Mr. McMillan, as I said, he, his conversation with me was, "I've never had children, don't plan on having children, so we're not losing any students."
And it borders, it borders their district?
Right, so, yeah, so we're not creating another island somewhere in our property that all of a sudden is like, "Why is this little hole here? You know, it doesn't make sense for this."
And the other three parcels around the Baker property, you've contacted that landlord, and they're not interested?
Correct, and that would be, it would be Tim's parents.
Okay.
So the, this, these other pieces, this one, here, yep, so that's Randy Baker, this is Randy's, and this is Randy's, and they're not interested in having their property come out, but we did reach out to them and ask, "Would you be interested in this swap?" And they declined.
And the school bus would be able to go through that district to get to...
We do pick up, uh, let's, come on, let's resize here, we do pick up some students here, because this is Sunny Slope Road right here, that... So, right now, we do pick up Baker's student, they just have to walk to Mineral Point School District property. So they walk to the next, to the neighbor's house who happens to be in our district property. When I talked to, to the Bakers, they were like, "This family rents, and I don't know how long they would stay there, you know, so that might not be an option for us." I did share with Todd Schmitz today that there's a good chance that that property will be in our district, so as you set your bus routes up, you now know you can pick them up and drop them off right in the driveway, right at the mailbox, so...
As far as losing acres for the district or square miles?
We're gaining, we're gaining...
Thirty thousand, almost.
Value?
No, I'm talking physical area, does that mean anything to the state as far as funding?
Um...
Based on value?
Sparsity, you know, I, I don't, I don't think losing forty acres will hurt us, I think, I think we're under that threshold, or that wouldn't hurt our, that threshold for us.
Okay.
It's a good question. Yeah, I didn't see, so we have a, hold for a second, a other question? Scott, a question, please.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stuffus?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Okay, move on to the over room money.
Okay. Mitch, thank you for negotiating all that. You all, I'm sure that took a lot of time. There was a lot of back and forth, we did, we did a lot of work on behalf of the Iowa Grant School District to try to help pull this off, on behalf of the Bakers, but Angie did a lot of that work as well, so...
Thanks, Mitch.
At last, I wanna say last months, at the last meeting in February, you'd approved some technology purchases for the elementary school through flow-through, so there's now a request basically for the middle school, high school, for some furniture.
So a little bit of background, if I can, there was a group of six of us, and actually as well, the elementary staff, but we attended a recent training called Transforming Learning Spaces, where it really talks about kind of the rationale there about how the comfort and accessibility and just general environment of the classroom affects productivity, and productivity affects engagement, which affects academic achievement, so they didn't say that, like, they're all directly linked. But some of the things that we took away, I came back and talked with Matt Austin about, you know, and, and just what classrooms looked like when we were in school versus what classrooms are looking like with today's learners and today's technology. So they had a lot of nice recommendations that Matt and I talked about, one of them was, "Try some, don't purchase everything at once, try some to see how the students respond." So this was kind of what Matt and I came up with, that we could offer to some of our teachers to try some and get feedback from students. They kinda had a rationale that basically you take the number of students you have in your room, and you wanna have at least six additional options for them. So if my classroom is twenty kids, I wanna have twenty-six seats, but different kinds of seating. And then basically three heights and three different styles of chairs is kinda what's being recommended. So one of the things we're asking is for taller cafe tables with taller stools, so we would be raising up, and then just incorporating some more soft seating instead of basically the traditional school chair. We sent out, basically, I sent out, if you scroll to the second page, Mitch, sent out pictures to our staff and said, "Hey, we're thinking of trying these, it's not a green chair, by the way, it's gray, so it'll go with our color," but the color didn't change when we changed the picture. Basically said, "We're thinking of getting some of these to trial, the, the hope is students would give us feedback, you would be able to give us feedback about our students using them, what are they saying, those types of things," and the response was overwhelming. We have a waitlist from teachers who want to try these things in their classrooms, so I sent, though, Matt and I created a kind of a wish list, and then Elaine contacted the company, because she's so efficient, and they gave us a $2,700 discount because we're ordering things en masse. And so this is kind of our, our use of trying to incorporate some updated, flexible, soft seating, incorporating some of these. We intentionally didn't include the elementary in this, because a lot of the elementary renovation has these styles of furniture, but those are things that are gonna be covered in the, in the referendum, obviously, when, when you guys start talking about furniture and, and outfitting, there, a lot of the pictures that Tim is showing us are they, these same styles of, of chairs and seats and those types of things, so...
What company?
This is through Demco, and we really went with Demco, one, so there's a video attached with the speaker we went to go see for Transforming Learning Spaces, it actually took place in Barnabille, and the speaker in Demco is who worked with Barnabille for it, so it wasn't, it's, I, when Tim was here the last time, I asked him, "How do you decide who you go with furniture?" And he said, "There's really, you know, eight to nine nice reputable companies in, in the state that you can go with." They had worked with Demco several times, but this was just one, because it was the name I knew, and so that was just like Google. You know, Matt was like hyperventilating, trying to spend this much money a little bit, and so he kept like looking on Amazon or looking on Wayfair, and prices really were pretty comparable, especially with the, the discount that they gave us in the mass, so... There is a link for his, a short video where the speaker that we listened to kind of explains how this rationale, and he's, he's been doing this for twenty-five years now, he was fantastic to listen to, but kind of talks about how the classrooms have changed, and how we need to meet the needs of the learning environment of our students. I told Mitch, "If you guys had two and a half minutes, you could watch the video."
No, that's okay. I have moved to approve the expense of flow-through money?
I'll sign it. Any other questions or comments?
Just for clarity, this is flow-through money, so it's, it's federal money that we get anyway, and if you don't find a way to spend it, we lose it after eighteen months or something like that.
Twenty-seven months, yeah.
Twenty-seven months, okay.
And we still, this still leaves us with a, a big chunk of safety net in case something else comes up this year.
Sure.
So I have like kind of a question, or maybe a concern, I don't know. I, I did watch the video, and, and I know there, you know, all this research, but it seems to me if we give these kids a million different options, then they're gonna take the easiest, most comfortable route every time, where when we were in school, sat in a chair, you learned your lesson, and that was it, and you respected and you hated your teacher. I'm just saying, man, I'm just, I see a wrestling room right now with kids...
Well, it is for special ed.
Well, I mean, obviously it makes access into the classroom more, you know...
Uh-huh. You're no fun.
Nate, I do get, I do get that, and, and it is, I mean, it's easy to wrap your head around it, but if you start going into a lot of these current companies, like, look at how Epic outfits their offices, look at how, you know, Vortex outfits their offices, this is the learning environment that is translating into the work environment of how they're doing. So the day we were at Barnabille, outside, I mean, their library is, you know, a, a mix of everything, but outside their library, they have basically a lot of the chairs that we, or similar sized chairs with individual tables. There were kids sitting out there every hour of the day for their study hall, and they were working the whole time, but they're choosing where they work the best, and that's really what it comes down to, is they're choosing where they can be the most productive. And it is very different than how we all went to school, I mean, we, we had a chair and your choice was, is your seat connected to the desk or not, or like in my case, it was, "Do you have a left-handed option, because I'm left-handed, or do I have to, you know, work on a right-handed desk?" That's not the way work, workplaces are anymore.
I, I...
And, you know, Matt and I have talked about, yeah, and Matt and I have talked about, you know, like, what if we do these, in, in the classrooms, obviously, but it, you set up your expectations, you set up what you're doing there, and you set up, you facilitate... and you set up, you facilitate how that space is going to be used. And so we're teaching students more independence and responsibility because they're self-directing their, their learning, which is really what's going on.
The way, the way I like to look at it, and correct me if I'm wrong here, you know, as far as how education's happening. But it doesn't appear to me that, okay, we're going to have a lecture for an hour, and you can pick which seat you want to hear that lecture from, either get a nice plush love seat or this hard chair. You know, my, my understanding is that it, a lot of class time is spent in like small groups, discussion, let's solve this problem, you know, together. Why don't you guys pair up? Or let's do this kind of read the self-time. Or it's a lot of kind of dividing up, where maybe you have a four-top of kids working on something. Maybe you have four kids sitting, relaxing, reading a chapter or something, or having a discussion about a topic. You know, so it allows, you know, for different subjects, whether it's history or, you know, it probably isn't conducive to every subject, you know.
But I think.
And I, I did get it. Maybe it works in some classes and not others.
Trust me, that's, so I could, you know, my analogy would be, you know, I like to have comfortable boots on when I'm out working all day. So, you know, you have to be comfortable. But again, it's funny, because I'm the youngest one in here, yet I'm the one that's like, this just seems, you know, just, not that it's crazy, it just.
It's different. It's different. It really is very different. And I do think the way we teach in classrooms has definitely changed. I mean, there's very little standing in front of the whole group. I'm going to talk, you're going to take notes, and that's the class. I mean, we're breaking out, we're doing individual. And one of the analogies they used that day is, if I gave you something to read at home, do you sit at your kitchen table and read it?
Probably, it's the quietest human in the world.
But, but, you know, when I am at home, I'm on my bed, or I'm on my couch, and my feet are out, but, you know, I mean.
You're, you're going for a comfortable spot.
I'm, I'm going for comfort so that I can attend to what I'm doing. So.
My only concern is, it's like you're getting two love seats, for example, versus.
So what, our plan for the love seats, and, so if you go to the stairs and then head towards Jen Wollene's classroom, we actually want to make that kind of a breakout space. And that's where the love seats would go.
Yeah, you're missing my point. It's like, my concern is, should we be buying? How did you come up with the breakout? Because instead of two love seats, maybe we should have 10 love seats and less cafe tables, for example, or vice versa.
You know, so I will be honest. Originally, when Matt and I made the list, we did these in chunks and was like, that's 5,000, it's 5,000. And then Elaine, Elaine being efficient, put them all together anyway. I, I think, I'm not opposed to it. I think one of the things was love seats. So one of the things we talked about that day was, you know, couches were talked about. And if you think about changing learning spaces, the bigger they are, the less space in the room where they'll work. Where if you do smaller individual pieces, you have the options. You have a lot more flexibility and options about locations and groupings and those types of things. So it actually makes more sense to do chairs that you could pair up in twos or threes or fours versus a couch. And then when you're talking about collaborative and groups, a couch, you're all lined up and, you know, side to side where the tables or the chairs can be turned. You know, I think it's something that we could definitely explore. But Matt and I specifically brought the love seats. And I think Kyle is actually having one of the students build like a coffee table so that we can do a seating area outside the library. I don't know, when you guys went through Barnabille, you probably saw some of those. But trying to, to bring some of those classrooms out into some of our other spaces. But like I said, I, you know, the tables were the first thing that the teachers snatched up, actually. And I mean, out of the first six responses, I think, five of them were the tables. Nobody complained about the chairs either. But the tables were what teachers were asking because I think they see them as more conducive for the small group work. You know, and then there's that running thing, we have MacBooks, and if you sit at the chair, you have to hold your MacBook on your lap or whatever, versus if it's the tabletop. And I think a lot of our teachers just see that kids like to stand or be partially standing, and a high cafe table does that for them.
They can also stand at the cafe table.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of kids would like to stand.
Yeah, so, and, and we have a lot of, you know, obviously, we have a lot of seating that's this height. So we wanted to intentionally add seating that raised them up to try and get that option. We have, we have quite a bit of floor rockers or seating at ground level, too. So trying to think of that three heights thing, we wanted to go up more than down. So. And then we'll get feedback, and we'll hear what the students say about it. And teachers do, they'll monitor kind of who, how they see the kids doing them.
We get a nice thing.
So it's all ready to be sent as soon as, if you approve it, I'll push the button tomorrow. So.
I like cafe tables, too. Are you sure they're going to be big enough for four kids sitting on them?
So there were three different sizes of tables, and Matt brought out his tape measure. And we like laid them out in his room, and we do feel, that's kind of the middle size, so they're 36 or 42 inch tops. I think there was a 30, a 36, and a 42, so maybe a 30, so like a three-foot width table. So, but I know that there were three different, three different measurements, and we measured it out, and we wanted the middle one because the full size, the, you know, the biggest one seemed really large and the other one, that's what we were worried about, that it wouldn't work. It would only refrain to show.
Well, that's good.
Okay, any other questions for Angie or anybody? Okay, just got a question, please.
Dolph?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stuffus?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Bass?
Motion to adjourn.
I did receive correspondence about putting the maintenance room in the old gym down there at the elementary school. I was going to let you know, I think that was a terrible idea, to use up that space in the old gym. I, I'm all bringing up, I don't know that there's type of community to input on that.
I heard the same, same concern. We had talked about, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not really out there, but whatever. As far as, so it was going to house the air handler there on an elevated position, and.
As opposed to being on the roof deck. And the cost was about $20,000.
Less.
Well, the cost, the cost for that room was 20,000, but it was a savings in not having to reinforce the roof deck for the air handler up there. So Tim kind of thought it was, in essence, a wash.
Well, this person was just concerned about the physical space. It was going to be doubled as a community room.
And then the cafeteria, chunked out the cafeteria.
Well, true, yeah.
And.
It does seem a little obtrusive, I admit.
The board really didn't have much time to discuss it. It was presented, and five minutes later, we're going on, I guess, so.
Well, I had a brief conversation with Tim about it. I mean, we talked about, will the cafeteria tables still fit, you know, with the space left? And, you know, I wanted to be clear that we weren't going to do a lot of any like gym-type activities in that space. You know, because if you have a whole corner that's taken out with a room, it, it does limit the activities, but, you know, we're going to have a brand-new gym. I keep trying to tell myself that, you know, that really any kind of activity where kids are running around, they're going to be in that huge gym. You know, but.
And another question that, that I guess should be answered is, that we spent a boatload of money on that floor in there. Was that, was the membrane on that floor going to stay if we didn't put that room in there, Mitch? Do you know, or is that going to come out regardless?
I, I would have to follow up with Tim.
I thought, I'm pretty sure they were going to try to replace it, but I was going to talk to Tim on that as well because he had made a comment that it was going to be hard to seam that, which it's rubber membrane, you can cut and lay block up through. And then with the air handler, I was going to talk to Tim, too. Did he sandwich that weight?
Uh, no.
Was it because it was going to be supported by that room, correct?
Correct.
I was, just didn't know if they could brace that somehow and actually have it mounted inside, but not put that room somehow.
It's a good question.
If they could brace out the steel ceiling and the base on the sides.
I don't, I don't know the difference of either holding the weight on top or holding the weight from underneath. I don't know if you still have to.
If we have any additional supports, yeah.
Wasn't it also offering some near-needed storage? Did I not hear that right?
Yes, for Roger. Because we'd looked, you know, one time we talked.
He's going to put his salt and stuff in there, right?
And the garbage that would come up through the building.
The garbage was the big, the big one, yeah.
Because I know we talked about a building down on the corner where the new parking lot was, and, and a valid point. You know, you've got to put in a $12 million renovation down there, and then you're going to put a $30 building up, you know? So then we looked at, can we add on in that driveway? And then with the idea of having to dig footers, the water, gas, and electric come into the building through that driveway.
I just had an idea on that. So you know how the fence issue with the neighbor? His fence is on our property. Do you think he'd give us a little corner that we could build a shed on? It's backyard.
Could certainly ask.
Would take care of the issue.
Yeah.
I'll talk to Benny.
Are we going right now?
Well, we have two neighbors, so it's easy to figure it out. Maybe one from Chicago. There's a little racket.
Yeah, right behind you. Maybe we could use that.
But I mean, you know, and adding on at that point in time was going to be a lot more expensive than coming into that, that room location.
The location, the location of a little storage room is perfect. It's just.
Where it's at.
It's just a matter of re-proceed the old gym, I guess.
Right.
Just pass it on.
Yep, thank you.
We are going to put, I told Mitch, we're going to put on school board, pay in our next, in our next meeting. So if there's anything else that anybody wants, either call him or me, and we can add it. Seems like there was something you wanted on a regular basis, but I was going to look back on my records, and I haven't yet.
Health care plan?
Yeah, it'd be nice. It wasn't bad.
I would go on record, you know, all the flu that we've been having, Richland Center closed today due to, well, over 30% of their student population being gone. Our three-day weekend comes at a great time. The, at the elementary school, they're going to really be disinfecting bathrooms, hallways, classrooms, are wiping down desks, tables, door handles, everything at the elementary school tomorrow. And then they're going to start that up here as well. And then Sunday with our weekend custodian will really get at a lot of the more common places, you know, spraying down, disinfecting our bathrooms and things. So we're trying to stay on a check with Janet today. Our, our sick call-ins are pretty low at this building. So if we can at least try to address some of that, the influenza kinds of things, and try to kill off as many germs as we can now. A three-day weekend allows everybody to kind of get away from each other a little bit, too. Hopefully, we can.
It does come at a good time. How about the elementary school? What do you see for numbers down there?
I overheard Nurse Julie today say that district-wide, they were at about 10%. And I don't want to correct you, Mitch, but she said she called Richland Center, and they didn't close because of the 30%, they closed because their teachers were supposed to, like, they couldn't fill.
That's right.
So their students weren't at 30%, but they didn't have enough teachers and the, their teachers were getting hit really hard.
I think the TPI has set a threshold that's about 30% for.
And the school nurse, Richland told Nurse Julie, it was, they were at 14% for students. But that, she, and then I just overheard that conversation. And she said, oh, that's, we're at about 10% across the district,